I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. Let the records reflect the members that are here this evening. Also, Councilman Chris Tillman and City Manager Jim Whitlock has joined this virtual. So you guys, just to be able to keep us straight, if you raise your hand when you come on the screen, I'll recognize you. We can go from there. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll magically appear if I have something I need to say.
And for any votes as well, please, Chris.
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember should have received the draft minutes of May 22, 2023. Is there any corrections or additions to those minutes? If not, all entertaining motion. Okay, okay, it's motion by Bill, second.
Second.
Bradley, any further discussion? Although it's a favorable approval in the draft minutes of May 22, 2023, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those likewise. Chris, are you going to be so we can see you, or are you just going to go verbal? Okay, for motion and stuff like that, if I can recognize you by a thumbs up or thumbs down? Thank you. Okay, it's carried unanimously. Thank you. Delegates and action items, I guess, Darryl, we'll move right into you with the ordinance and agreements for review. And we're talking about the community village discussion, the draft that was sent out to us. And I would ask anyone from the, out there from the floor, would have any comments as we talk through it? Please feel free to give them. This is something I know at least two of you has been involved in when we did Meads Crossing. And I know there was a lot of discussion, so your input is very much welcome, or anyone else from the floor. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may add also to make sure that they please come to the microphone so that we can hear them.
Thank you. We'll take care of them our end. All right, Darryl, you want to lead us off on this and we'll move into it from there.
Sure. So Janice, you received the email about a week and a half ago from Jim. It's pretty cut and dry, unless you guys have different shape. So we've been here about community village for quite a while about, you know, what works, what wasn't, what doesn't work. You know, for me, from the outside, what happened at Meads Crossing was just a simple matter of, I think it was well done. But when the alleys went away, the roads didn't widen, as a for instance. That's just my gut feeling from, you know, a couple of years ago, three years ago, whatever. So but in any case, Jim has spent hours, after hours, what have you, working on this document. It's been not fleshed and vetted by builders, but having had their, having had their input on what works. You know, because some of these projects we have coming up are playing major roadway. And we, you know, we have to be working with them and them with us because that road is not going to be cheap. So, you know, we need to understand that going forward. So now away from the major planned roadway, you know, the alleys, we had discussed, the mayor, city council discussed it last month. Beyond the walls, what they're looking for from us will be a favorable recommendation so they can put it on the agenda for next month. And, and further than that, at the Monday meeting.
So next month at the council workshop will also be a public hearing?
I believe so, yes.
That's.
Thank you, Jim.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
So Jim, did you want to sort of run this through the way you have, the way you, it's pretty much the way Jim's done all the other orders, changes? You know, with the coloring being the, in the border as to what is a change or a delete or what have you.
Okay, Jim, if you want to lead us off there and maybe kind of go page by page, whichever works for you.
Well, I think it might be helpful to touch on some of the, I guess, more substantive changes in the ordinance. We've spent a lot of time over the last, well, couple of years actually, talking about alleys, whether they should be required or not required. And several months ago, I think we reached consensus between Planning Commission and Mayor and Council that maybe alleys for single-family homes weren't really necessary, but we still kind of like the alleys for the townhomes. So the, the draft in the, the draft ordinance addresses that. But it also requires a, an increase in open space if the community village is not going to use the alleys throughout. So they sort of have to give a little extra to not have to do the alleys throughout the project. The code already gave the planning commission some latitude to require alleys only where it made sense. Or to also consider if the inclusion of alleys or requirement of alleys outweighed or could be outweighed by other pieces of infrastructure that would be part of the project. So we had a little bit of latitude previously, but this clarifies with, you know, making it easier for the developer to get relief on the single-family homes from the alleys. It also, one of the bigger shifts in it, even though the text itself that makes the change is small, is that instead of going by a ratio of number of dwelling units that can be attached versus detached. For larger properties, we went with a land use area measurement rather than like a unit by unit. So a larger piece of property can have a ratio of, say, attached, which would be like a townhome or a, a cluster home. Some folks call them like, you know, a triplex or something like that. Based on the percentage of land that would be dedicated to the attached dwellings versus the single families. So that's another departure from the current ordinance. And, and in the one copy that was in your packet, the discussion draft, as, as Darryl said, the changes are tracked through word there. So you've got text that's being deleted is struck through and then read, and text that's being added is in red and underlined. So let's see, if you guys want to go through line by line, if there are, or page by page, if there are any questions about it. But those are, those are kind of the overall big changes. And, and there has been also some talk about home occupation specials. They're currently prohibited in community villages. And there has been, there have been some folks who would like to change that. And a little bit of discussion has come forward on it. And the mayor and council seem to, at least the prior mayor and council, seem to favor eliminating that from community, community village to make it consistent with other neighborhoods around the city where a home occupation special will still need to go before the Board of Appeals so that the neighbors have a chance to come out and testify and hear what the commercial use would be. But they're not going to be strictly prohibited just because a house is within a community village area. So that's another change that, that the draft includes. Let's see. And.
I'll get you in a minute, Chris.
Okay, and I guess one, one last thing was some shift in, in parking requirements for townhomes. Now that Meads Crossing is built out and has been, you know, essentially settled for quite a while now. We've taken some little field trips out there in the evenings and weekends. And there are regularly a lot of open parking spaces in the auxiliary parking areas for the townhomes. So it does look like that requirement is putting in a lot more impervious surface than we really need to. So the draft also has a, a reduction in townhome parking. So I think, I think those are kind of the highlights for it. But happy to answer any questions, and if you guys would like to kind of walk through it page by page. We certainly can do that as well, but hopefully that's a good summary for you guys to start with.
Okay, before we get to that, Chris, you had a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask if the, and I don't recall through, from reading it through. When you talk about the ratios for the areas, is that on usable area for development or gross area of the property?
Let me find it here real quick.
Buildable land.
Forty percent of buildable land.
Okay, answer the question. I just want to make sure we had it defined one way or the other, whichever way your, your research told them. I just want to make sure we defined it.
Is that regardless of the acreage or the site?
Oh, the, we made the threshold 150 acres. So, you know, that would only speak to like a very large parcel that was under consideration for development.
Okay, just for an example, what, if we're talking about the sole property?
Right.
How many acres is that?
Sole, I think, is 118, somewhere around there, between, between the two. There's a little hangover part on the other side, on the opposite side of Harney Road from the primary piece. But I think all told, it's about 118, something along those lines. Mountain Brook Farms is a little over 150. I, I don't have, since I'm remote here, I don't have access to a lot of the usual little toys at my fingertips. I'm not sure how big some of the other properties in the growth area are, like the Bogger Grain Farms property or the property to the west of Flowserve. And I'm, I'm not sure how many acres the Hoffman property, which is the large farm area close to the roundabout between Creekside and Selms Mill Road. Really not sure how many acres that one is.
I think I have as well, I have as way up there, I have as well over 150. I can't remember. All you remember? Yeah.
So, so on relative, so if it's under 150 acres, it's the, the total property area? If it's over 150 acres, it's based on the buildable portion?
No, if it's under 150, it, it doesn't change from what the, what the code says now. And that is that you can have up to 50% of all the dwelling units. That you can't have more than 50% being attached dwellings.
Okay, okay, gotcha, okay.
If it's over 150, then we use the land area instead of the, the unit count.
Okay. All right, go back to the original, then let's go page by page. I think that would be to ease us so we don't miss something.
We go on page by page as in?
As in.
Not just what changed, anything in the?
I would go by what's in front of you, the, the draft of the overlay, which was the clean package.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, if there, if there are other items that the commission feels should be updated as we're going through this exercise, we certainly can, you know, make amendments to it, you know, prior to the public hearing. So, you know, as, as they say, the patient's on the table, we may as well do what needs to be done.
Right. It's pretty close to the same.
Well.
If it's easier for you, I can jump back, back and forth if you've got.
Well, the printed copy there starts at seven.
Right.
Okay, so I just, I mean, I just had a question on some of the earlier stuff as I read through the whole thing, that's all, so just, I mean.
So we, we can get that as we go?
Well, you can, but not if you start at seven.
Okay, then let's, let's start, let's start with what you have.
Okay, so.
Just tell us where it's at so we can follow along.
Yeah, so, so on, under the concept plan 11A, it says that buildings, including arrangements for handling storage needs in lieu of individual sheds or similar outbuildings, which will be prohibited. So I, I guess what I didn't understand was is there like a requirement for the amount of storage that you're supposed to have on a, on a building or something, or a dwelling?
I don't quite understand the question other than.
The idea, I, and, and Dan, I had, I don't have, I didn't find a specific text that you're referring to. But, but the general idea was that because the density in a community village and the spacing tends to be tighter, the idea was to prohibit sheds, individual sheds to be in people's yards. So the community village was encouraging that the developer would incorporate like a central storage area for things, and, and this is probably unlikely for like lawn equipment, but for things like trailers or campers or boats or things like that, that they could incorporate that within the community village to keep that stuff out of driveways and off the, off the streets.
Okay, okay. Yeah, there's not, yeah, there's not really a requirement, it's just that you can't have sheds, that's all this says, you can't have sheds.
It's, right, you can't have sheds, and, and also you.
Wasn't that changed? Didn't we bring that up months ago in the city council that single-family homes could have a shed?
So that was done through the Development Rights and Responsibilities Agreement for Meads Crossing. Unfortunately, with Meads, while the developer responded to a comment regarding that restriction, that storage for the homes would be provided within the garages and that there was no need for storage sheds. By the time homes were being erected and the salespeople were there, they were essentially saying that the yards were big enough for sheds or, and their HOA docs, documents that they were sharing with people indicated there was a process to get a shed approved. Though city code said you can't have it, and the developer said that the storage needs will be met by the garages when we reminded them of that. But again, I guess we have to keep in mind that Meads Crossing had a very long gestation period between their original approval and then the real estate market tanked. And it was many years after that before they actually started to build. So I suppose that little tidbit was forgotten. And council decided to step in and help out the, the new homeowners there for the single-family homes and allow the sheds. But that was to Meads Crossing.
A single family, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, I think my confusion was, it, this is something that was supposed to be part of the, in part of the concept plan. You have to, in the proposed design standards, you have to tell them, you know, how you're going to do storage and stuff like that. And so I did, it kind of implied that there was a requirement for storage somewhere, that's all. But it doesn't sound like there is.
In the case of Meads, that storage requirement was supposed to be met by the garages in the homes.
Right, yeah, okay, yeah.
Well, just to clarify now, as it stands now, future community villages, individual, individual storage sheds will not be allowed, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, that was one of my notes.
So no sheds, even if it's a single-family detached?
Right. And I thought it was, I thought it went the other way. I thought a single-family home could have a shed, but everything, it's, if what we're agreeing upon for us here is a recommendation to the city council, then that, we need to agree on that.
And Mr. Chairman, like the sheds in Meads came late.
Excuse me?
The sheds in Meads came late. There were five provisions made to the DARA for Meads, like Jim said, over many years. So the sheds in Meads that are allowed in single-family homes are 120 square feet or less. The seat, the roof has to match the roof on the house, the siding has to match the house and the trim. So you're not buying it at the big box store. You're, you're having it made.
Chris, you still good with us? That's on.
Yeah, I'm, I'm following that, and I'm, you know, kind of in the realm of if we are probably going to go back and allow it in a DARA anyway, why would we not simply allow it in the code?
Jim, can you answer that?
Again, in the, in the case of Meads Crossing, I, I suppose council considered that there were some extenuating circumstances. And that it was.
Right, but I mean, essentially, essentially the builder pulled a fast one on us. And we had to go back and change the DARA to cover the fact that the builder pulled a fast one on us. So either, either we're going to hold to the requirement or we're not. And if we're not, then let's codify not.
Right.
Sure, understood. And that was, again, that was a council decision, I suppose it was, you know, taken into consideration how many folks had purchased homes out there, not being aware of that limitation and having seen the HOA documents. So again, if, if we have another community village come through, we will know to make sure that they, that their HOA documents will speak to what's in the community village code.
Do we have any process for reviewing those documents? You know, and reviewing their sales material? Because if they're going to go ahead and promise things in, in a sales pitch that we're going to be stuck to later because they promised it in the sales pitch, you know, then, you know, what are we doing?
And we don't want to go through what.
Sure.
Right.
And, and again, this draft reflects the conversation that we've had to try to make community village more successful in sticking with what would actually be in the code, to make it buildable as the code would lay it out.
Yeah, well, I mean, my only, my suggestion, I'm happy with, with holding to the code what we have.
Well, let's hold off, hold off a minute there, Chris. Let's hold, hold, so let's get the consensus here of the commission here. Do we want to leave it as it is, that it's not, it's prohibited? Or do we want to recommend that that be changed because of what the council can do with the DARA? And Jim, I may, I want some input from you on that.
If, yeah, if I could, the, so the DARA is a case-by-case scenario. And not every community will necessarily have a DARA. I think they are becoming more popular, but there is supposed to be a public benefit to having the DARA. So in the case of Meads Crossing, the public benefit was originally that they were going to forward fund the York Street Sewage Pumping Station. Because of the timing of the project, we ended up bringing that pumping station online ourselves without Meads funding it directly. In the case of some other potential community villages, there could be a DARA if there's a big piece of infrastructure that's going to be built for the city that doesn't specifically benefit the community that's building it. So that would be a trigger that would enable us to enter into a DARA. But, but generally, there's supposed to be some, some public benefit to doing the DARA, something that the developer is going to do for the city. So again, not every project is going to have a DARA. And, but that, that document would be specific to, you know, to one project. Whereas if you change it in the code, that means everybody gets to do it by right. So I guess the question is, and, you know, a lot of our conversation has been on, when we talked about community village, a lot of the focus has been on alleys and parking and maybe to some extent, open space. But, but mostly alleys and parking, I think, have been the, the hot buttons on community village. So nobody's really been up in arms over sheds as far as the ordinance goes when we talk about, you know, whether, whether there is a demand for, you know, the neo-traditional community in, in Tawny Town has kind of been the big question, you know, will alleys work in Tawny Town? And, you know, the consensus has been not universally. So they might work for townhomes, but probably not for single-family homes. I think that's the big, big change here. But, you know, whether we want to see sheds in people's backyards or not, that really hasn't been a, a hot button issue for anybody. So my, my take was that generally, everybody's comfortable saying that, you know, sheds aren't supposed to be part of the community village, that, you know, again, and it's that aesthetic aspect where you're considering the, you know, the view of the open spaces, the view from the street and things like that, because you do have a little bit of a higher density than in your typical R10 or R7500. So, you know, again, it, it certainly could be changed if you, if the commission feels that, that sheds are, you know, are necessary for any single-family home or something like that. And, and you think that they should be allowed, we can certainly float that idea.
Well, let's see what the consensus are.
Prohibited.
Prohibited?
Yep.
Prohibited.
I'm having a hard time because I can't see me ever buying a house that, I couldn't put a shed on property.
Well, I don't want your shed to interfere with me looking out the backyard at my house.
So if we, if, I, I guess I'm with Chris, if we're going to do this, it needs to be the rule.
Same way, so it looks like as, as it stands, they're prohibited. So I will keep what, what's in front of us now, so we'll move on to the next.
And it's not, I'm okay, I'm fine with, with leaving the prohibition in, resolving that with a DARA if that becomes an issue to be handled. My question was more toward keeping us out of trouble with the home buyers by knowing what the developer is promising. And I, that's, that's where I think we, where the ball got dropped was, was there. Because they're out there saying, oh, yeah, you can have a shed, you can have a shed, you can have a shed. And when people found out they couldn't have a shed, then suddenly we had to turn around and, and change our minds on that because people had sheds and they were told they could have sheds.
Okay, understand.
I.
Understand what you're saying, Chris.
Yeah. My question is mechanism for reviewing that kind of information that they are putting out for sales.
Okay.
You good, Bill?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, let's move forward.
Okay.
Your next section.
Yeah, so the next one is the first red line, so just, I know Jim said this, I just wanted to clarify, so. We used to exclude special home occupations, but now we are going to allow special home occupations, correct?
Only in single-family homes, is that correct?
This would, this will be throughout the community village.
Yeah, it's.
And townhouses too?
Yep.
Right, right, so any, anyone would be able to go to the Board of Appeals to make their case for a special home occupation.
And so, so, so what I read about a special home occupation, somebody has a business and they typically would want to have more parking, right? So we're going to allow, we're not going to change the parking requirements, but we're allowing the, but. So for instance, like if we, if we don't allow parking on either side of the street and they got a certain number of parking places at their house, I mean, and now they get to have a business in there, I mean.
No, they're going to have to go in front of the board.
Board of Appeals. And they, they can make that decision if it fits the community.
But if, if you don't allow parking on the streets and you only have three parts, three house, parking spots for that house, you can't add more parking.
Right, no, because that, that would be something that the Board of Appeals would have to consider in their.
Address it at that time.
On their address.
Okay, so.
So there, so that, that's the way to cover it on the Board of Appeals.
I mean, there's, there's nothing to cover, there's no place to park.
Right, so that, that would be an issue not to have it.
Well, the anti-ear point, so one of these, they, they have to prove is that, that for special home occupation that the owner runs that occupation. They can have, I think, one other employee, and they have to prove parking. So there's a lot of parking in Meads that is available. It may not just be in front of their individual home, and it's for the community at large. So they have to prove that it might be a nuisance to the community. So I, I see your point about the, you know, what's there to prove or.
So, yeah, so, so if I had a business, I would go parking at a little spot and let my customers park at my house then.
That is one way for it, or hey, the other way, parking is over that way. Again, so the amazing thing is that Meads has some, in the towns, they have two-lane streets. That's it, there's no parking in front of the streets, on the sides, if you will. That wouldn't have happened if, if the alleys would have happened, perhaps.
Okay, so, yep, I think I'm good, I know what we're saying here, okay? Okay, so, yep, I, I think I'm good, I, I know what we're saying here, okay?
And I guess my biggest concern was a daycare in a townhouse. But there again, that goes to Board of Appeals, and they have to consider neighbors and whatever, so that, I think we've covered that away. Okay. You're still at the floor.
And the next thing was about the hundred and fifty acres, I think we, I think I'm okay with that.
Rest of you okay on that?
Yes.
Chris?
Yep, I'm good.
Okay.
So then the next one, when we're talking about the alleys uh provided throughout the community. Yeah, so just to make sure I'm understanding, so, so if we allow an alley, they have to provide more or less open space?
More. Isn't it more, Jim?
So where alleys, so the new language would be specifying where alleys are not provide, are, are provided throughout. Then it stays at the twenty-five percent for the gross land area for open space. Where alleys are only for the attached dwellings or the townhomes, then they have to up that open space to thirty-five percent. So they have to give us, so if they're not gonna do alleys in the um, in the single families, they have to give us more open space. If they do the alleys, they have less open space they have to, to preserve.
The idea being that we're not gonna give up the alleys to let them have more dwellings.
More dwellings.
If they don't wanna put the alleys in, that's fine, but they can't have more houses.
Right, yep, I'm good.
And I, I shouldn't have said, give us open space, because that's a separate thing, we, we don't, we don't necessarily accept all the open space. We decide what, what we may want to be a city park, but with Meads, for example, they have a lot of open space, but the city chose not to accept any of that. To be conveyed to the city like as city parks, that way the HOA maintains it. Um, you know, and it, and it's generally for, for that community, it's like they're. Community garden area and then the, the various open space parcels that are scattered throughout. But there weren't any large dedicated spaces that we really wanted to accept as, you know, to make a city park.
Yep, okay, yep.
Let's just stay on the alleys just for a minute. I know when we did Meads Crossing, we had a lot of conversation back and forth about the alleys. Anyone, uh, Olive, if you have any comments you wanna make on the alleys, I remember you had a lot of input. Uh, when you were on the commission about the alleys, pros and cons. You have any comments or anyone else from the floor having?
The only thing that, that we always wanted was.
Come to the mic, please.
We was, we was always wanting we could let have narrower streets if you had the alleys in the front. But if you don't have the alleys, you should go back to the wider streets in the front, always, and we have not done that.
Okay. Well, actually, we don't have the alleys in Meads Crossing.
We don't have that, we were supposed to have.
We do not.
Right, but the, but the roads didn't get wider, did they?
Right, they did not.
Stayed the same.
Yeah, he's correct about that.
We never got the wide streets back.
So we must have.
And that's something you should think about.
Okay. Thank you.
Even your men on, on the street doing the plow, I'll tell you that.
Anyone else? Okay, I think I covered, the alleys, we're good on the alleys?
Yep.
Mr. Parker, if I could, just on that with Meads Crossing, um, Mr. Glass is absolutely correct there. And that was another, uh, basically with Meads Crossing, the appetite for development um for the mayor and council at that time. Was such that Meads was allowed to do, uh, to move forward basically without going back to. The concept stage to re-engineer everything. The, the mayor and council wanted the project to move forward and that was seen as the way to make that happen. Um, so it was kind of a product of the um, I suppose, I suppose both the market at the time as well as the political. Preference at the time, so that's why they did not go back and redesign and make the streets wider. Okay, thanks. But ideally, that would have been the trade-off, if you get rid of the alleys, now we need to be looking at turning movements, cars backing out of driveways on these narrow streets.
Right.
But the, the political perspective at the time was, we want those houses, make it happen.
Right, okay.
It was the town manager at that time that didn't want the wide streets. That's why we never got the wide streets. He went to Walkersville and around and seen the other streets, do you remember that?
I do remember part of that, yes.
Yes, I think we do.
Does y'all, but I do remember.
But we should always push for the wide streets in the front if you're not gonna have the back alleys. If you got the back alleys, then you're taking away from the front streets, so you could have a narrower streets.
Right. Okay.
I agree.
Excuse me?
That'll be part of the concept that whatever comes in front of us.
Well, the concept is kinda, is what, what it is.
Well, it starts there.
Starts there. We need to make sure when preliminary approval, we need to pick that up.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm getting at.
Yeah.
We have to make sure, so if we don't go through that again, then they're gonna say, well, we don't have the money, we, we don't wanna go back and re-engineer. So, okay.
All right.
Good.
Next.
The next part is where they talk about the off-site uh spaces and the parking. Um, so then the question I had, you know, we're talking about the wider streets and everything, so. So if we decide whether we have a wide street where you can park in front of your house or a narrower street where nobody can park in front of their house. But the requirements for the parking per dwelling doesn't change, is that right? I mean.
Hold up, please.
You know, like.
You gotta copy this, right? You got this?
Yeah.
Say that again?
So, so if I look at this here, it says, okay, on lots less than ten thousand square feet, okay, you have two onsite parking and one off-site. And three, three places onsite meets the requirement, right? So, so I can have th- three parking spots on my uh property. But if I have a wide street.
Street.
My friends can park in front of my house still, but I have a narrower street, I can't have a party that takes more than three cars. Right, I mean, is that, that's what we're saying, right?
Yep.
That brings up something else.
Yes, it does. I guess so when you buy your property.
When we.
Hold on, I guess when you buy your property, you decide which ha, which side of the street you wanna buy it on, because you've gotta have parking on that side or not.
Well, and, and they might not allow parking on either side. Like, I think that's the last I heard, Garrett Ridge, they weren't gonna park on either side.
When we got the narrow streets and kept the narrow streets, do you not remember asking for parking elsewhere? And they did put that in the townhouses out there.
Yes.
And I was the one to ask for that too.
Yep.
Okay, yeah, so I just wanted to make sure I was, again, I've, I've pros or cons right now, just making sure I understood that no matter what the park, no matter how wide the street is, the parking requirement for the unit is the same. Right?
I think that's what it says here, right, it is. Jim, that's what I'm showing, right?
Okay.
Yep, no, right, no change, right, there's not a. Right, street width basis for onsite parking.
Right.
And then, and the off, the off-site parking is then required if you don't meet the requirements on the site, got it? I'm, I'm, I think I'm okay, I understand.
Okay. Next one. Do you have anything on that open space and parkland? I had a big question about, but I can't remember what it was for, you have any, it's number eight on this one sheet.
Number eight.
Jim, on page three, number eight, the open space and parkland, can you touch a little bit on that, I? I don't quite understand what it means, about thirty-five percent of the gross land.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, that's, yeah, that's just making the change where they have to, they have to dedicate more or they have to preserve more open space. If they're not gonna do the alleys throughout the community. So it just goes up by ten percent from what the code requires now. So if they, if they do choose to do the alleys. There has to be twenty-five percent of the gross land area for open space. But if they don't do the alleys throughout, then they have to do thirty-five percent instead of twenty-five.
The open space is same as green area, right, that we refer to later?
Yes, right.
Right, okay, all right.
Yep, yep, so the, the last uh.
And that, that's not supposed to include um anything that's. That's supposed to be dedicated for like a stormwater facility or um, you know, in. In the case of a property that would have a, a major street going through it, um, they couldn't, oh, we're not gonna develop that strip. We're gonna keep it in open space, but in reality, that's the strip that's gonna be the planned street, like that, that doesn't work, they can't count that.
Does that also cover designated areas as wetlands?
So for this measurement, the. Environmental details of the open space are not, are not really called out. There's more restrictions about what's gonna be dedicated as public open space and then what the city. Would be considering accepting, uh, there are more details to those open space requirements, but none of that is changing in the proposed ordinance.
Okay. All right. Dan, anything else, I'm still, I'm, I'm out of questions here, I think, on my end.
Well, to driveways, right?
Driveways.
So this is uh.
Yeah.
E.
E?
Yeah, oh well, whatever number we were on there.
So, so letter, small letter E for driveways?
Yes.
Um, yep, so that, that has been another point of, of discussion for us. So. With the idea for the alleys. Part of that was getting the, the vehicles out of the front yards, like out from being in front of the homes. If we're shifting away from that design aesthetic by allowing front-loaded garages like for the single-family homes, well. You're, you're kind of, I, I guess by default, you're gonna have cars in front if you have a front-loaded garage. Um, so while we saw, I, I, I'd say we saw limited success with Carol Vista. That their garages are pushed forward of the homes, I think on a lot, if not all of the units down there. And the driveways are relatively short, um, and that encourages people to park in, inside the garages, which is the intent. Of the aesthetic intent, uh, intent of the ordinance at the time. Um, you know, I suppose if you have a short enough car, you can park it in the driveway at Carol Vista and not block the sidewalk.
Right.
But, but again, if you're gonna do the front-loaded um garages for single-family homes and, and even potentially some townhomes, you know, it. You're gonna have a, a, I would imagine in most cases, a two-car-wide driveway leading up to it. And I guess aesthetically, then it's kind of a moot point about whether there's a car sitting in driveway or not. So this would also help meet onsite parking requirements, I guess, by getting rid of that, that um. Driveway prohibition, so it, it really just is a functional offshoot from not requiring the alleys.
Right, so, so the way I read it, it, so you can only have a driveway in front of your house if you have a single-family home, that's it. Right?
Right.
I'm good.
Yes.
And I guess the difference between Carol Vista and Meads Crossing is, one is age limit.
Right.
When we first started, I mean, Carol Vista was one of the first ones that we really tackled.
Right.
So, so we're talking about two different types of communities.
Yes, so, and this, this is the section that I was alluding to earlier when I was giving the summary. The text is um. Not changing much here, but this is the section where it talks about the commission being able to modify the requirement about driveways. And it used to say, in specific instances, on specific lots, and we struck on specific lots. So now it's just gonna read, in specific instances, and permit a driveway in the front yard where a practical difficulty can be clearly demonstrated. And/or where adherence to the driveway in the front yard, I'm sorry, requirements for any lots in question has the effect of preempting other design considerations. Or to the plan as a whole, I, I didn't, not a direct quote, I just picked and choo, chose some of the words in there. But that's the section I was referring to earlier that gives you some latitude. You know, where, for example, even when Meads Crossing was going to do alleys in the beginning. We realized it didn't make sense to put alleys around the perimeter lots, where they would only be serving houses on one side. So the houses that backed up to the edge of the, the project area, um, or backed up to open space, we didn't require them to do the alleys. Even when it was that original neo-traditional community design, just because it, it simply didn't make sense to put alleys in those places. And this is the section that gives that latitude.
All right, any other comments? Any comments from the floor? Like from the county?
I have a, getting ready to vote on this.
Uh. Yeah, I guess what I'm, what I would ask for is recommendate or, yeah, go ahead.
So I have uh comments, and I can only talk to my friends here, I can't talk to anybody outside here, so I just wanna say these comments to my friends while I'm here. So uh, so I think the community village is a, a good tool to have in the toolbox, you know, so I, I'm okay with, if we go ahead and, and approve this and everything. But right now, in my opinion, I am not in favor of any more community villages anywhere in the Tawny Town area. Because I don't think the high-density buildings of the homes meets what our comprehensive plan says we should do as far as a small-town atmosphere. So, but nevertheless, I do think it's a good tool to have in the toolbox, so since I can't tell you guys this outside, I said it now, thank you.
Any other comments? So I'll be looking for a recommendation for approval for the city council on this, right?
Recommendation, yes.
Okay, so if somebody like to make out a motion, then we can move forward.
I'm moved that we uh accept the amendment to the community village driver's.
We don't wanna accept it, we wanna make a recommendation to the city council.
For the city council to vote, yeah, make a.
Right.
Favorable recommendation. To uh go to the city council.
Favorable.
Favorable recommendation.
Is there a second to that? Bill seconded, hoping for discussion. Anyone? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and for Chris, guys, you see a thumb up or thumb down, all of those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you, Carol, you okay with that? Jim, you okay with that? Gotcha. All right, moving forward. Uh, your report, Carol? Hang on a minute. Okay. Your report.
Thanks, sir. Just a few things, um, on our, um, I'm gonna stay, stay with the flow of our, our meeting here. Um, we have. Two projects that came in, basically, just, these are both informational. So at two-eleven East Waller Street, the Frazier property, that is like a lot of lots down through that area, where it's two lots. So whereas the lot was divided from left to right, they chose to do what's called a lotline reconfiguration, which is go from the um, instead of going left or, or forward to rear, going left to right. We did the same thing at the Dana property where the billboard is, you know, um, it's very common um, um, practice in, in development today. Any questions on that?
So what changes does that make for the city? I don't see any, right?
Well, not really, she's not intending to develop this, she's just doing it as housekeeping for the property right now. Where it will be registered the way you guys see it on the um, the top page of that um, Frazier property.
It's seven thousand square feet, over seven, seven thousand square feet, so she could put a building there.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Mm-hmm. Yeah, keep, keep in mind, that's downtown, um, that's downtown business, so.
Okay. Okay. Anyone have any issues with that? Bill? Chris? Yes, he's going.
No, I'm good with it.
Okay, thank you.
The second one, with the town-county agreement, and this is Tiffany's idea, no, the town, it's the town-county agreement. Uh, there's a rule, it's, it's pretty neat, where the county will let us know of any projects within one mile of the city and vice versa. This is one of those, the Wilson Downs, um, property, um, that, um, starts there at Harney Road and goes towards Amisburg, if you will, uh, jots in and out of, um, um, behind the houses there, um, past recovery 180 and whatnot. Um, that's, that property was, was 33 acres. The property on this sheet of paper here, um, it's a little under an acre. It, it could be their way of just trying to, um, create a different access to the point later on if, um, they ask to be annexed into the city or whatever. I mean, who knows, but they're being creative. There's a house in, in a, um, it says shed, but I think it's a barn, um, there. So, again, that's a minor subdivision outside the city and, um, they just let us know about it.
Okay. Any comments? Anything with the county? All right.
A few other things, Chairman, um, um, city manager and I, after, since our last meeting, have met with, um, the people at Werny's Distillery, that's on the southern side of Frazier Boulevard, the Frazier property. It's been a little quiet since then on that property. Um, the, um, a reminder that, um, the Tonin Town Zoning Board of Appeals, um, we heard the case already for Bento, um, um, Bento, uh, J- Jattel. Uh, we gave a favorable, um, recommendation for the Board of, um, Appeals, and she will be in front of the Board of Appeals on August the first at 7:00 PM. I'll probably remind you again. I will be reminding everybody, but that, so that's already, that board's already stood up to accept that. Uh, the AFC, 30-minute site plan, they were going to be presenting tonight for the first step of the Board of Appeals, um, but a building, um, um, redesign, they've withdrawn their, um, application for a, um, Board of Appeals hearing. So something changed there.
The Downs property? Hill and Brown?
I'm sorry, Downs?
Yes.
That, that lot.
That was the other one we had here.
For the county. So, the, again, that's, that's the, slightly under an acre, past recovery 180, right? Um, it, it's a section of, um, that Downs property, that, that chunk there is, is what this drawing is for.
I'm talking about 211 East Bollard Street.
I guess, that's the Frazier property.
Frazier property. Okay. Gotcha.
Daryl, what's, what, what's the purpose? That might be a stupid question. What's the purpose of this? What was this being submitted or given to us?
So the town-county agreement, they overpowered, let's live, anything like that within, within the mall. That's pretty cool they do that because, you know.
If you guys remember back when the, uh, the egg place, the chicken place out here off of Rook Road.
Yes.
Came about and a couple of things. We found out about it after the fact, and I think there was something else happening out off of Crossmore Road or something was going to happen, and it was the after effect that we've heard about it. So courtesy, which we appreciate. Thank you.
Okay, we're, we're chipping later, Chairman. Metta Book Six, um, the infrastructure's been, been, um, accepted by the city, so that's off there. So the word, the name Metta Book's still there, it was seven. Uh, they can't be much behind that because the road's already been there, that, that type of thing. Um, the, uh, Bowman Park, there's actually some trees being felled and, um, they're working on, uh, the access to the park and the parking and then begin to, um, the, um, uh, the pathway. So they're, they've been out there, but if you ride out full road, you, you can tell where it is. And, um, let's see.
Back to Bowman Park. Has an agreement or something been worked out with the property owner?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
And Jay's drawing up a legal document. Basically, the things that are there that are, um, nearly close to the lines will stay there until they need to be rep, repaired or replaced, and then they will be moved. That's been agreed upon. Uh, they've also been kind enough to, um, not require us to do defense on the, um, the property where the, um, pool is. So, um, that's nice.
Working together, that's what we're all about.
Yep, that's it, yeah.
Yep.
Hi, sir. Um. This is all from my report.
Where do we stand with the Tannery Barn?
Okay, so the Tannery Barn is, uh, store water management. So that, that they, so there's a number of ways to do the store water management, and they're trying, they have done a lot of work with, um, adding certain types of gardens and different vegetative type. So what we just have to do is get back on that with CDM Smith and, and, and Tannery Barn. So they have sent a report to us, and they want us to go over that. Um, and I believe it's still money in escrow, so we will be doing that. But it's, it's close to being on the list, but CDM Smith's been so involved with other projects in the city that this is sort of.
So the issue we had with the water runoff on the neighbor's property, that's been resolved?
From what I understand, yes. Yep, um.
Thanks, thanks.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That's it for you?
It's it for me, sir.
Anything, did Jay give you anything?
He did not. He's, uh, off, uh, on another venture, and he said there would be a report. In fact, he wouldn't be here tonight, so, um, nothing from Jay.
Hey. Okay, county update, Tiffany?
Just a few things. The triennial update to the 2019 Carroll County Water and Sewer Master Plan is up for discussion, decision, and hopefully adoption this Thursday in front of the Board of County Commissioners. And then if it is adopted, it'll go to MDE for approval next month. Um, the annual report has been completed and sent to MDP, the Maryland Department of Planning, and copies have been sent to, well, um, emailed to the city of the final version. And that re, makes, meets the requirement for the city for the MDP, um, requirement that the annual planning report is, is filed with them, is submitted with them. Um, but it includes the county information and the eight municipalities as well, all collaborative. Um, the economic development and land use study, it's in the draft document stage, and the consultant team did present that, um, their latest updates to the county, the planning commission on the seventh. You can watch that online if you'd like. Any questions? All right?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Old business? There doesn't appear to be any?
No, sir.
New business?
None of that either.
Guess, how long will it be before we can start talking about the comprehensive plan again?
Uh, soon. You notice today's the first light month we've had in a while, so we can, um, stop having fun, guys, because we're going to, Karen did the next chapter, he was saying.
Okay.
Ramp it up.
Yeah.
Wrap it up. It's going to take a while yet.
Yeah, ramp it up.
Oh, right, right, okay, ramp it up. Okay, um, I have the next meeting, should be July 31st, if that meets everyone. Bill, you have anything for us? Brad? Dan? Anyone from the floor have any comments?
He said something.
Mr. Garner?
He said something about the, uh, the Tannery Barn. They did a nice job out back, if anybody's seen it. Really nice job. Nice big yard back behind there.
Okay.
Got trees all the way around it that's full grown. Tell me how they did that. But it looks good. It, uh, you drive back in there where my, my buildings are and you can really see it nice.
Okay.
It's a good job.
Good. Mr. Garner?
Yeah, like, talked to you about the new ballpark that's supposed to be down entrance by the Catholic cemetery. I think it, public safety, it should be connected with the other ballpark. You can go straight through by the old bay blue diamond and go around and tie in to the other road for safety reasons. Because if you have it, when you have an accident out there at the cemetery on the hill, on the turn, you know, you don't have another way in or out of the park.
Okay. Jim or Daryl, can you, I thought we did have a complete.
We do.
Dirt road. That's all she said she would go and improve the road, last I heard.
Who, who was?
The lady from the park council.
No, so there's, there's road to come off of, um, um, beside the, uh, past the church between the building, um, that's, I can't remember where the building is anymore.
The old school, is that what you're talking about?
Agway.
Oh, Agway.
Yeah, that's where it comes along the Frazier Street, yes.
Yeah, so, um, there were, there's a proposed street to come from, um, um, Frazier Street.
Yes.
Up through the facility, and will, and will connect up and go all the way out to, um.
Near Blacktop, two lane.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. That's what my concern was.
Okay. Any other comments? Nope. All right, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. Is there a second? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Got thumbs up? Thank you.